...in the administration building boardroom on North Avenue. We'll begin this moment, we'll begin this meeting with a moment of silence. Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee, here. Mr. Deroz?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mrs. Rios?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone present who would like to comment on a non-agenda item? Hello, please state your, your name and your address.
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ This is about the scoreboard.
The second item on this list was that we will have a...
.......................................................................................................................................................................................
Excuse me, we're going to give you a new microphone so you can, that buzz isn't going on in the background so people can hear you better.
It's starting well.
Okay, we apologize for the audio problem.
And then, back in ninety-three, May twenty-seventh, a letter to Alderman Bachman, there's a paragraph that said, "There is no intention on our part to play evening baseball games or to light the facility." Again, the first thing you folks did was ask for lights. I don't understand why you are not living up to your word. It's very disturbing. The, uh, the scoreboard that is up there now, as I understand it, will be installed in May and removed mid-July. It has never once been removed, to my knowledge. You folks do not live up to your word. The athletic directors are also willing not to use the public address system which is part of the scoreboard. Well, they're, now they're not using scoreboard, they're using portable boom boxes which are also illegal by the city ordinances. And I will bring that to, cite the specific ordinance, although there, I understand there's been work on changing that, and I do not understand it, and I'm going to contest it because boom boxes are not allowed in residential areas anymore than the good-humor truck is allowed to come through once a day, let alone have up to six games a day announced here. You're abusing us. That's all I have to say for the time being. I will be making further inquiries into other things that I think that you folks have been doing wrong, particularly pertaining to the development of the property.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move to approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action?
It's in here a little bit.
Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Um, Mrs. Randall, moved, is there a second? I'm sorry, Mrs. Muehlfeld moved, is there a second? Mrs. Fee seconded. Is there any discussion of the consent agenda? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? I'll note the check register is at the front of the boardroom for public review. Seeing no comment, um, Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. We'll now move to the recognition section of the agenda. Mr. Croner, please.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Wauwatosa West and East High School student newspapers won awards from Wisconsin Newspaper Association's High School Better Newspaper Contest. Westside Stories, West High School Student Newspaper, received seven awards. Cal Vang won first place in photography and Gabby Verrett won first place in feature writing. Jack Wong-Tam took two second-place awards in graphics and general reporting. Also winning second-place awards were Sam Clough, sports reporting, and Ryan Radzky, feature writing. Kalen Rosine won third place in photography. The Cardinal News, East High School Student Newspaper, received two first-place awards and three second-place awards, including one in the general excellence category. Jack Lockhart took two first-place awards, sports reporting and freedom of information. Receiving second-place awards were Michelle Brown, investigative reporting, and Wes Zabrowski, freedom of information. In addition, honorable mentions were awarded to Leah McMahon and Hannah Dion Kurschner. The Wisconsin Newspaper Association Foundation, WNAF, is a not-for-profit arm of the state's newspaper industry, providing scholarships and educational programs, enhancing training opportunities, and connecting today's newspaper managers with the next generation of leaders. The Better Newspaper Contest recognizes student achievements in high school newspapering. The panel of judges is from Wisconsin's newspapers and includes publishers, general managers, editors, reporters, photographers, copy editors, and other staffers. Thank you, Mr. Croner. We'll also mention that the Cardinal News from East High School did win second overall in the state, so congratulations to all of those fine journalists at both high schools. Um, Mrs. Muehlfeld, please, will you continue?
Yes, thank you. The Wauwatosa West High School Trojan Players won the Tommy Award for Outstanding Musical for their April twenty-thirteen production of a chorus line. Four performers also won individual awards. The Tommy Awards Program, sponsored by the Overture Center in Madison, is an education initiative that honors and celebrates excellence in musical theater among area high school students. Fifty-four productions were reviewed by a team of theater professionals and performing arts educators. A total of nine received the Outstanding Music Award. More than one hundred and fifty awards will be presented to the participating schools. The Outstanding Musical Award recognizes all areas of production as outstanding. Members of the production are Adam Stefan, director and choreographer, Jason Meisner, vocal director, David Topalovek, orchestra director, and the orchestra, Rebecca Bowden, scenic designer, a chorus line cast, costume designer, Kurt Schnabel, lighting designer, Mark McDuffie, sound designer, and Marshall Thornton, stage manager. In addition to the Outstanding Musical Award, four cast members received Outstanding Supporting Performer Awards. They are Raven Burdette, Phoebe Albert, Jordan Lannis, and Mary Kaiser. The Tommy Award Ceremony will be held on Sunday, June sixteenth, twenty thirteen, at the Overture Center for the Arts in Overture Hall in Madison. The Wauwatosa West High School Trojan Players will be one of the participating schools to perform at the ceremony.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Muehlfeld, and congratulations to all of the students for their fine achievements. Uh, now we'll move to action items, human resources. Mrs. Randall, please, will you read the motions?
It is recommended that the school board approve the administrative contract for Director of Recreation, Michael C. Wick, effective July one, twenty thirteen, for two-hundred-and-twenty-nine days worked at a salary of seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars. And it is further recommended that the school board approve the administrative contract for the Supervisor of Elementary Education, Rhonda Shum, effective July one, twenty thirteen, for two-hundred-and-twenty-nine days worked at a salary of ninety-five thousand dollars, and I so move.
Is there, thank you, Mrs. Randall, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Croner. Uh, Dr. Erdl, do you have any comments or introductions you'd like to make?
Yes, Mr. Wick is here this evening. I'd like to introduce, um, Mike, and he's going to say a few words.
Good evening. Uh, I just wanted to come in and say thank you for the opportunity. Uh, very excited to move up here and become the Director of Recreation for your school district and pick up strong programs where you have them and continue the, the strong program forward. That's all I have today. I look forward to working with all of you in the future.
Thank you.
We look forward to bringing him back to the great state of Wisconsin.
Yes, I, I've spent enough time in Illinois that, I'm from Wisconsin, it's time to come back, so, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Shum is not able to be here tonight. She is actually in Waukesha presenting to their school board the Human Growth and Development curriculum, so she wasn't able to be here tonight, but she will attend the next, uh, school board meeting so she can be introduced.
Okay, well, thank you. Is there any board question or comment? Is there any public question or comment? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. Next, we have a, a resolution on provisions of the state budget bill. Um, Mr. Croner, please, will you read the motion?
It is recommended that the school board adopt the following resolution. Whereas, the proposed budget bill pending before the state legislature includes provisions allowing the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee to sponsor independent public charter schools to operate throughout Milwaukee County and any adjacent counties, whereas expanding the authority of any third-party entity to approve charter schools significantly erodes the ability of local citizens to govern their local educational opportunities through their elected school board. Whereas, expanding the authority of any third-party entity to approve charter schools erodes funding for local school districts and has a negative impact on both local taxpayers and on the ability of public schools to serve students in a fiscally responsible way. Now, therefore, the Wauwatosa School District Board of Education requests that Governor Scott Walker veto any provision that expands the authority of third-party entities to authorize charter schools so as to avoid the negative consequence that will result to the students and citizens, specifically the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee's authority to authorize charter schools outside the city of Milwaukee, and I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Croner, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Deroz. Um, Dr. Erdl, please, will you comment on this as to why we are putting this, uh, resolution forward? This is a rather extraordinary resolution, uh, so please, will, will you provide some context and background in your assessment of the impact of this particular provision in the state budget?
For me, I guess, first and foremost, there's been a lot of comments about non-fiscal items, uh, being in the budget and pledges to keep non-fiscal items out of the budget. This is clearly one that is included in the budget without any public conversation whatsoever. Um, I, I have known that there was a move to try to get Milwaukee's authority, UWM Milwaukee's, um, authority to authorize charter schools outside of the city of Milwaukee, and specifically the one on the county grounds which is located in Wauwatosa, but was assured that that wasn't going to happen. When I saw this, I was quite surprised. I think what it, not only does it authorize them, UWM, to, to charter this school, it goes even well beyond, and I don't know the population, the student population within the five counties, Milwaukee, Ozaki, Washington, Waukesha, and Racine, but it's, it's well over fifty percent of the students in the state of Wisconsin that now UWM can authorize charter schools in any place, um, located in those, those counties. In addition to not only authorizing schools, students can be drawn from any of the school districts within those counties to any of UWM's charter schools. Um, and my understanding, understanding is existing charter schools and new charter schools. So it goes well beyond the intent of opening the charter school. We did have some involvement, obviously, the school board approved a planning grant to develop the Forest Exploration Center Charter School. The original plan was to build a new building right on the Exploration Center grounds. Um, a lot of things happened, and it ended up now moving to the Eshweiler Buildings and became, um, something that certainly was not the intent when we originally began in the process, but ultimately what happens, and I think in our school district of seventy-four-hundred students, let's say that they draw a hundred students from the Wauwatosa School District. Right away, that's at least seven-hundred thousand dollars that would go to that charter school, and with the spread of students across our school district, not specifically being from one school, one, um, area of students, it's hard to reduce costs to make up that difference. So ultimately, all it is, is we continue to try to do our operations with a hundred less students with the same fixed cost, yet we're taking seven-hundred thousand dollars and, um, and giving it to another public entity, which is another concern of mine as well. UWM is a publicly funded university. So, that really is, um, the crux of it, and I, I think the other piece, you guys are elected for a reason, to manage and to approve, to not approve, to authorize charter schools if you so choose within the district of, within the school district of Wauwatosa, and that's, um, the role of a school board. And I think it's another conversation, if Wauwatosa has failing schools, we don't have failing schools. Um, and my concern, um, goes beyond the conversation of the expansion of charter into dis, to areas for, to, to give opportunities so parents and students, um, don't have to attend failing schools. Uh, we're not in that situation. So that is another component that actually concerns me about this piece of legislation.
Thank you, Dr. Erdl. Is there any board comment on the resolution? Mrs. Randall?
Um, I just want to say I'm glad that we are advocating. Um, in years past, you couldn't go to a board meeting without having individual Board members, um, ask the community to get involved in advocating, and, um, at, at ti, at that time, the big issue was, uh, reforming the funding formulas. So, um, I hope that we can get our community involved, um, in advocating for the resources that we need. This will be, as Dr. Erdl said, a major, a major hit. Um, this budget also has a provision for, um, giving tax credits to individuals who want to send their children to private schools with...
Uh, Mrs. Randall?
No income.
Mrs. Randall, could you keep your comments to the resolution and not go into other areas of the budget, please? With regards to UW Milwaukee?
Can I speak about advocacy?
Well, no, I'd like to keep our comments to the impact of, of, of the provision giving UW, um, Milwaukee this authority, um, if, if we will. That's what we have adjourned here.
I'll wait till the end of the meeting, then.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Croner, please.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Erdl spoke quite nicely about the immediate impact of this proposal in creating the, the new charter school on the county grounds, but I, I think what also we have to think about is the way that this is written into the budget. UWM will retain authority to create any other charter school in Wauwatosa that they, they would like to. And I don't think the citizens in Wauwatosa realize what a precarious position that puts us in. Um, several years ago, there was a controversy in the district when one elementary school was going to be closed, and the citizens made it quite clear that they want nine elementary schools, two middle schools, and two high schools. And we are really now only able to do that by bringing in, you know, over nine hundred open enrollment students to maintain all of those schools. Um, if UWM is allowed to open even more charter schools in Wauwatosa, and we lose students to those charter schools, we may not have enough students to operate the full slate of schools that we have now. So I think in, in the short term, um, this is bothersome in that it's eroding our ability to manage our, our own district, but in the long term, I think it's a threat to the very structure that we have in our district that the citizens, citizens are very happy with. So I, I hope the citizens hear this and get involved and talk to their representatives and at least pull this out of the budget so that if it does come up again, it can have a full public hearing and at least be discussed, at least with the merits and the drawbacks, um, all at the same time.
Is there any other board comment? Mrs. Muehlfeld, please.
Yes, thank you. I would like to comment, uh, that this is a far-reaching, um, arm for the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee, and that it is not something that I believe, um, is in their, is in their portfolio and the things that they should be working on. So I would like to ask the people of Wauwatosa to specifically address their comments to Governor Walker. Um, this is especially important immediately, as immediately as you can please do this. Um, this is not, um, the intent of the university system, and, um, Wauwatosa School District needs your help, please, to talk with the governor and veto this.
Thank you, Mrs. Muehlfeld. Any additional board comment? Oh, yes, um, Dr. Erdl?
I think another component to remember, too, is that the school board, um, has been very responsive to creating different options and actually chartering schools in our school district. So it's not like, um, the, the Wauwatosa School Board is kicking out ideas and saying, absolutely, we're not open to different ways of, of, uh, different ideas and different methods of educating our students. We do have a STEM elementary school. We do have two middle school STEM programs. We're already offering, and I think quite successfully, STEM programming in the district. Originally, on the onset of going back to when we first had the discussion about whether or not, um, to be involved in the planning process of the original concept, which I, like I mentioned, is much different than what's going on now, we had discussions administratively that it, there's, there's risks associated with adding space because of, same thing Mr. Croner was saying about the space that we do have, and adding, taking on additional space and additional fixed costs, there was risks associated with that. So I think when the concept changed, um, those risks far outweighed the benefits for the school district, too, so...
Is there any additional board comment? I have some, some comments. This resolution is carefully tailored to limit it to commentary on this particular aspect of the state budget. The Wauwatosa School Board, the Wauwatosa School District, has been very accepting, cooperative, and wanting to work with the educational policy of the state of Wisconsin. I do not feel this is about educational policy. This is a particular, specific matter about, and I'll be direct here, this is about empire building by UW Milwaukee. And I can cite the example of my family that for one hundred years, my family has been a participant in the partnership between the public universities of this state and the public school systems. One hundred years ago, my grandmother graduated from Bangor Public High School. She attended the, uh, La Crosse Normal School, which is one of the predecessor institutions to the University of Wisconsin at La Crosse. She became a public school teacher. There is an example of the partnership between the state, the state colleges and universities and the public school system. My father graduated from Bangor Public High School, and while he could afford it, he hitchhiked to the university in La Crosse to attend classes. I graduated from La Crosse Central Public High School, graduated from the University of Wisconsin at La Crosse, graduated from the University of Wisconsin at Madison, and now I sit on a public school board in Wauwatosa. One of my daughters graduated from Wauwatosa East Public High School, graduated, graduated from the University of Wisconsin at Parkside, and now is a high school teacher in a public high school in Wisconsin. One hundred years, my family has worked and benefited and participated in this partnership between the state colleges and the public school system. This move by UW Milwaukee is a breach of that partnership. It breaks that trust, and frankly, it stabs us in the back, that the idea of the state university moving into Wauwatosa and setting up a second public school system, a second public school within the Wauwatosa Public School District, breaks every tradition that my family has participated in for the past one hundred years. Now, obviously, it's not about my family. I use that only as an example of how drastic and dramatic and fundamental of a change this will be, to start this kind of behavior by the state universities. And I note, how do they have the money to do this? Well, we know they've been collecting a lot of tuition money and banking it. Well, you know, obviously, this gives them one place to spend it. We need this stopped for the sake of the trust and relationship between our public schools, our K-12 schools, and the state universities, and the, and, and the future of public education in Wisconsin. With that, I'll take public comment, please. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please, call the roll.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, motion carries, seven-zero. Uh, with that, we will move to, uh, the superintendent's reports, uh, I'm sorry, superintendent's action items, uh, renewal of, um, committee appointments. Uh, Mr. Deroz, please, will you read the motions?
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. It is recommended that the school board approve President's nomination for renew, renewal of the Negotiations Compensation Committee until the organizational, organizational meeting in May two thousand fourteen. This HR committee will be chaired by Tom Deroz with Mary Jo Randall, Ann Fee, and Carmela Rios as members. It is recommended that the school board approve the President's nomination to reappoint the board liaison of the School Safety Committee until the organizational meeting in May two thousand fourteen. Board members Sharon Mufeld and Mary Jo Randall are nominated to represent the board at community meetings to promote dialogue regarding school safety concerns. It is recommended that the school board approve the President's nomination of Sharon It is recommended that the school board approve the president's nomination of Sharon Muofeld as leader of board self-assessment activities until the organizational meeting in May 2014, and I so move.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Mrs. Randall, thank you. May I please explain these motions? These appointments were made last term, which was my first term as president. They were, under our policies, I considered them to be more ad hoc appointments and not standing committee appointments. Therefore, there was not a vote on them at the time, at least to my recollection. As I'm in my second, and by rule, final year as board president, for these committees to continue their work to completion, they will have to be reappointed, and I wasn't comfortable having a successive, you know, two successive years of appointments of a committee without vote of the board. So the memberships or the assignments, so to speak, are the same as what they were in the last, in the previous year, with the exception of adding Mrs. Rios to the Human Resource Committee, as we need to get her as much experience as we can, as fast as we can. So that is the reason for that addition. So is there any board comment? Mr. Carter, please.
I don't have a problem at all with the appointments. I just have a question about having four people on the compensation committee. Since that's a quorum of the board, it seems to me now that essentially the board decision will be made whenever there's a unanimous vote of that board to bring something forward. That seems like kind of an awkward situation to me.
That was considered. We did consult with council with regard to the legality. It is legal. Obviously, to have a majority of the board on a committee, usually not done. I considered that in the past year, all recommendations of the Human Resources Committee were adopted by the full board. So, you know, the three members of the committee at that time are still three members on the renewal appointment, and are a majority of the board, I mean, a majority of the committee. And also, I considered that every matter that was sent from the committee to, every matter that was brought from the committee up to the board was very thoroughly reviewed by the full board, and I really didn't think we rubber stamped anything. And I really think that the members of the HR committee were very open in the full board meetings to adjustment of their positions based on discussion heard in the full board meeting. And there's one other change here, to try to respect the broader context of this as well, that last year, the committee was allowed to take up items on its own initiative, and this year, the committee may take up only items initiated by Dr. Erdl, and then he gives them to me, and I procedurally send them to the committee. So there's an effort to put constraints on the scope of the committee's activity to more specifically tailor it to the business that the superintendent feels we need to accomplish, rather than have a broad-ranging opportunity for initiative on the part of the committee. That, to me, is favorable when considering the idea that there are four board members on the committee, that they will not be taking up self-initiated matters. So I'm hearing what you're saying. It's not ideal. There are constraints. I attempted to put constraints on it, and the reasoning was the need for Mrs. Rios to participate as much as possible directly in order to facilitate a quick learning curve from her.
Thank you.
Any other board comment? Any community comment? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante, please, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Jeros?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muofeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes. Motion carries, seven zero. Reports, the superintendent report, Dr. Erdl, please, you have the staffing report first?
Yes. This year's staffing report is a little bit different than what we've done in the past, and I tried to address, over time, questions come up, different questions about our staffs. We tried to give some demographic data, and then we reported out a three-year trend in some of our other information. So I will kind of walk through where we're at with staffing. Staffing is sometimes, not sometimes, it's always in flux, depending upon enrollment, enrollment shifts. For example, today, I was notified that we have a high number of JK kids at McKinley, which we know eventually places like McKinley, Roosevelt, I think, is currently scheduled for two sections, but we know we get more move-ins and ultimately end up with three, sometimes four, sections. But McKinley is at 58, so that's a split that we're going to do and add another section of JK. So there is some movement with staffing from this point as we do move forward. Under our total FTE, you can see, obviously, we have a majority of our staff as teachers. We're in the neighborhood of 550, 549.5 teaching staff, and really, it's over three years, all of our staffing, this year's staffing plan is very similar to what we've had in the past. No major changes or increases to the staff. Employee residency, one thing we were able to do with our software system is really look at where our teachers and our employees live, and it's interesting, 30% of our employees live within the Wauwatosa zip codes. Next highest is 10% in Brookfield, 5% in Hominy Falls, 3% in New Berlin, 2.5% in Franklin. So I don't know if that's important, but I think it's interesting to really look at where our staff is currently residing. Looking at the gender makeup, male and female, the males are in orange, females in blue. And if you look at the different groups, administrative assistants, with administrators and custodian are the only two groups that have a majority of male employees, administrative assistants. We recently hired a male administrative assistant, so there will be one male that's on there for this year, but that was done last week. So, but you can see the breakup in the different employee groups for gender. The racial makeup, this is one that we talk about often, in particular, when you look at teachers and a majority of white, not Hispanic, teachers. Our largest, our group with largest percentage of minority employees is administrators, but with a smaller group, that kind of skews the percentages. But it is an area that we need to continue to work on and address. It's something we bring up in diversity committees and about every conversation that we have, trying to address it. The average age, now that's a pretty loud graphic, but if you look at, again, the largest group of teachers, you can see it's a bell-shaped curve, which you would expect, I guess, with ages of employees, ranging anywhere from 23 years old to 71 years old for our employees. For our teachers, one thing that often is touted in school districts is the number of teachers with advanced degrees. 66% of our teachers have a master's degree. We have one teacher with a doctorate, a number that roughly 70% of our teachers have advanced degrees, which is a large component. I think this is an important graph, because it really talks about turnover and what our turnover rates are. From 2010 to 2011, it was reduced, and 2012 probably isn't completely accurate. I think the best time to look at that would be the end of August, when, right before the school year starts, because that, we do have teachers and different employees that leave between now and the start of next school year for various reasons. But I think it's a good sign that that rate has gone down for all groups. And then what I'll do is report back in August, and I think that's important data to keep an eye on as we continue to move into a different way of managing the school district with employees, so. Moving on to West High School, there's no major changes. If you look at the total FTE between the years, I think it's important to point out that we do use, at the secondary level, a staffing ratio of 26.5, and that determines the number of total staff that are deployed. Principals generally have the authority to look at the class sizes, the student enrollment numbers, and make appropriate selections for staffing, and we work with principals to make sure that we can offer the classes that we need to offer. East High School, I think what I'll point out about East High School, and the board had received questions about orchestra at East High School, and we did put the staffing in. There were questions about why it changed last year, so the staffing has been put back in a manner that it was two years ago, where both orchestra teachers would be working at Longfellow and both at East High School, similar to what is going on at West High School. This past year, they went to one and one, caused some concern amongst parents and students, so we addressed that, and that has been changed back for next year. Whitman Middle School, the number goes up at Whitman because of enrollment. When you see staffing increases in these four slides for secondary schools, they always relate to projected enrollments, and Whitman's projected enrollment is going up. And also, you see unallocated staffing, that .77 currently is unallocated, but will be allocated before the end of the summer. It's staffing within the formula that hasn't been deployed to class sizes. And Longfellow is similar in that regard. They're going up a .3 of an FTE for this year. The special staffing relates to alternative education, athletics, library media, student learning, and student services, teachers, guidance counselors, social workers, areas like that. And again, that's fairly consistent. And at our elementary level, the same numbers, and I know that's a lot of numbers to look at, but I think the important point is there hasn't been any major changes or any major shifts, particularly at the elementary level with this group. On this slide, it shows a three-year graph on band, general music, orchestra, physical education, and world languages, and we can see where that has gone over the past three years. One of the drops in physical education is larger number of students that have elected to take it in summer school, as well as a new online option that is there for students. We also do have the opt-out, which has an impact on PE numbers as well. I think one thing that's important to point out, our orchestra numbers continue to grow over the past five years. Those numbers have gone up, and in particular, at the elementary level, and so I'm not sure what that's going to play out for the future, but orchestra has gone up, and the band numbers have stabilized, and here it looks like it's actually dropped for next year. But at the middle school, I know the numbers continue to raise, in particular on the west side, those numbers are growing significantly. And our specialty schools, which we referenced earlier in regard to the legislation, we do have a number of specialty schools. Our special programs at the county programs, which are funded directly through the state, our alt school, our children's hospital, juvenile detention, Plank Road School, River Hills, you can see also listed on there is a trade school that is on there because of the three-year average, three years ago, or two years ago, that we did have that. And the alt school is dropping one FTE. That one FTE is shifting to West High School. So when you see an increase at West, that's because of one alternative school teacher shifting. And the Montessori, you can see the growth of the Montessori and the STEM. The plan that we had for the elementary STEM program four years ago, and we're staying with that plan, is to grow it to where Wilson is one section of STEM, one section of general education, and with the numbers that we've had, it's consistent. I think JK, right now, we're at about 14 students at Wilson. We're not adding open enrollment, because we want to make sure we can manage that section and keep the low, the number down, at least at this point. So we're holding off on adding any open enrollment, even though the number is below 18. We do have until the third Friday, I think it's the third Friday now in September to add open enrollment. And administrators and select employees, the positions that Mr. Dettinger and Rhonda Shum are assuming there was the transition last year that we went through to shift a number of employees to make the financial means available to hire those two positions, so we eliminated several other positions, and were able to, so without increasing expenditures, to put those two positions by reducing support staff and other areas as well to get that position in. So that is the staffing overview.
Are there any board questions?
I just have a general question. Do you know offhand when the last time the staffing ratio was changed?
I believe it was three years ago, where the high school, we went from 25.5 to 26.5, and the middle school went to, from 24.5 to 25.5.
Thank you.
Mrs. Randall?
We've talked a little bit in HR committee about this, but how are we doing with recruiting top teachers or the best teachers? Or I suppose Mr. Chenon would have spoken to that, but is there any kind of a clear picture of people who want to come here?
Well, I think, I mean, it's anecdotal, but I, last year, I started interviewing every single teacher as a part of the process, and probably one of the better things I've done, be able to meet every teacher as they come in and interview them. I'm thoroughly impressed with the people that are coming into our school district. It's not, it's not too often that the recommendations that are coming through are people that are new out of college. It's people that have experience, that are working in other school districts that have a desire to work in Wauwatosa. Administratively, I look at the ability to hire the people that we are from different areas to come and work here, and, you know, they're highly qualified, they're experienced, they're good people. So it's not like, I can tell, I mean, we're not at the bottom of the pool to hire staff. We're getting hundreds of applications for a number of positions, so there's a good pool, and we're able to hire some good people.
One more question. In August, you said there's like a report that you give out that informs us about turnover, everyone that's, teachers that have left. I mean, obviously, right now, it's too soon. Is that a formal report that you give?
We haven't done it in the past, since this is new with the staffing, but that's something I think, if we're going to look at the three years of data, I think it's important to show, when the school year starts, where we're at with it.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Any other board questions? Any community comment? Well, thank you, Dr. Erdl. We will now move to the business services area, and Mr. Mack will have a presentation, a public hearing on the proposed 2013-2014 budget.
I'm going to go through this. There's a lot of numbers, and I will touch a little bit on what the state currently has passed for the joint finance committee, which is not in law. So if you have any questions as I'm going through this, feel free to ask. Looking at the tax levy for next year, the general fund, 44.4 million, and that's up from 43.465 million last year. The capital expansion fund, which is generally used for capital projects, which we're currently not using because of aid, is $1,000 just to keep the amortization schedule alive in that fund, and that's down from $10,000 from last year. The recreation department, 854,000, up from 751,000 last year. And one of the provisions that was passed in joint finance committee is that the fund 80 levy cannot go up the next two years. And if that is the case, then what we'll have to do is, we're going to either increase user fees for the program, or we'll have to make some reductions in expenditures over the next years, two years, to stay even. It's not going to affect anything now. Technically, the, what the joint finance committee has passed is not in law yet anyway, and it has still not cleared the governor's desk. But that is one of the changes. The total levy without chargebacks, 45.3 million, down just a little bit, 44.2 million, I mean, I'm sorry, up a little bit, 44.2 million last year. The refund chargebacks, 1,590,000, and that's down from 1,79,000 last year. And here's another little comment on this. Because we had our membership adjusted towards the middle of the school year after the levy was set, and because we were doing refund chargebacks... the levy was set, and because we were doing refund chargebacks, if you look at last year's budget, you'll see that the refund chargebacks is actually 10,094 higher than I'm showing here. And the general fund levy is 10,094 lower. And it actually flip-flopped. They threw it, because, because we're doing a refund chargeback, you can't carry that forward under the revenue cap if you're doing a refund chargeback. So DPI just flip-flopped that, just, just so you know, in case you're trying to tie the numbers to last year. The total levy, 46.35 million in 2013-14, up from 45.3 million last year. The tax levy change for the general fund, 972,000, 2.24 percent. Capital expansion, down 9,000 or 90 percent. Recreation department is 103,000, up 13.76 percent. And the total tax levy without the chargebacks is up 2.41 percent, or 1,066,000. The refund chargebacks are down about 19,000, 1.78 percent. And the total tax levy is up with the chargeback, 1,47,587 dollars, or 2.31 percent. I just want to make one more comment on that piece before we move on. With the proposed budget that's in, that passed joint finance, it, it's going to be a little bit slightly different because right now, I don't want to make it too confusing right now, but the $75 under the revenue cap, plus the $75 that's going to come to us in a per-member aid that the state currently has passed, 75, 75 is 150. But we are losing $50 from last year in 1213 under the state aid. So it's a hundred dollar increase, not a 175 dollar increase. So just, just, just so you know that. It's not, it's not 150 dollars. The second year, I asked for clarification. I have not received it. Because I don't know if the $75 in the state aid is cumulative over the 75 for 1314, or it's going to be just another subtraction. So it's possible that the second year is, instead of 150, only 75. I haven't got, received any clarification yet. But that's the second year. I'm pretty confident first year is going to be a net increase of 100 dollars. Part of the reason they're splitting it, just so you know, they're splitting it under the revenue cap. When you do it under the revenue cap, it's permanent, per se. And if you put it in the aid, it's easier. You can see they can just take it away. Okay? The second piece of that is, under the revenue cap, it's directly increased taxes. Where under the state aid piece, it doesn't increase taxes. So the reason they're giving you some spending both ways, they're both of those reasons. The aid part doesn't increase taxes, it's just a direct, like a local revenue. And the part is not permanent in the aid. In other words, they can take it away. So just, just a little touching on that under the state budget. So it's very confusing what, what's put in the paper and what's really happening. That, that's all I would say at this point. But the truth is, right now, we're getting 100 dollar increase for next year, not 175 dollars in spending. If you look at the factors that the levy can go up, I ju, I don't mean, but I'm going to go back one more point. If they do go that route, instead of, I actually have a little bit more in the revenue cap right now. But if they go that way, our total levy will be, instead of 2.31 increase, right now, the way I'm showing things, it'll probably be a little less than 2 percent. The way the levy can go up, I actually have equalization going up just slightly, and I'm hoping that happens. That will decrease the levy 0.2 percent. The special aid had to do with the hold harmless of levy the year before. That's going to decrease 6,000 dollars. The chapter 220A decrease, our program is, is winding down. That causes the levy to go up 349,000, a little over three quarters of a percent. Computer aid, going up a little bit, it decreases the levy 7,600 dollars. The revenue cap increase, and I had 100 dollars per member in here, going up 700,000, or 1.59 percent. And the recreation department increase, 100,000, or 0.23 percent. So the total, about 1,066,000, or 2.41 percent. And without the recreation department, it's a little bit less, 963,339, or 2.2 percent. I have a second slide in here, just to show you, and I want you to take it down, go down to the second last line, because it, the refund chargeback decrease is in there too, of 19,182 dollars. And that's going down slightly. So the total levy, right now, is projected at going up 1,47,587, or 2.31 percent. Graphically, this, this is the levy with, with the recreation department, without the chargeback levy. And I didn't include the chargeback levy in here last year, and I'm not going to do it this year, simply because we already taxed for it once. And I don't feel that showing it in school charts is the proper way to do it because of the history. So that just shows you with the total, with the recreation department. Without the recreation department, for the revenue cap fund, 44.4 million. The general capital expansion and tax levy increase, you know, bar graph, 2.2 percent, if you compare that to the other years. The nominal tax levy history, which is in whatever the dollar is worth in that year, you can see that from 88 to 95, it went up. And then you had the school formulas put into place, and it came down. Two-thirds funding went into place, and then two-thirds funding was not upheld by the state, and the tax levy went up. But realistically, financially, you need to look at this on a real basis. And if you do it in constant dollars, and I did make a little bit of estimation on 14 dollars. But if you go back to 1988 through 95, the levy was much higher in real dollars than it is today. And if you look at the projected 14 levy, 44.4 million, you can go all the way back to 1997 and see 44.5 in real dollars. So if you look in real dollars for the last 17 years, the levy has pretty much been at or below what it is going to be for next year. Property tax and state resources. Again, you can see the history before the school formulas came into place in the QEO, and how the bar went together when there was two-thirds funding, and then how the state's commitment disintegrated as we move forward, and the lines keep moving apart. Surprisingly, the line keeps moving farther apart even now. And I thought that would come back a little bit, but it has not. Basically, the budget reductions are all done by reducing, you know, benefits for employees. But the state resources really have not increased, reduced the taxes. Equalized value tax rate for the general fund next year, 9.435, up 2.24 percent. Capital expansion, it's negligible. The recreation department, up 18 cents, 13.76 percent. Again, right now, it looks like that's not going to happen. The refund chargeback, up 0.225, down almost 2 percent. The total tax rate with the chargeback, 9.842, or up 2.31 percent. And that has an equalized value change of zero from 1213. If you want to do an affirmation on school property taxes for a $250,000 home, you take the tax rate times 250, you get about 2,461 for next year versus 2,405 for 2013, an increase of 56 dollars. It's going to be around the 50 dollar range, it looks like. That's, if everything comes in the way it is. I will say that I believe the city is reassessing this year also. So that comes into play individually on everybody's property. If yours goes up or down more or less than your neighbor's, it's going to have an effect on your tax bill. But that's really with the city's assessed value, not the equalized value. What we put in for levy, how it's collected, done by the city's assessment. The tax rate comparison, in graphical form, you can see that it's going up. And the primary reason it's going up is property values have gone down, so the rate has gone up. I don't put much into this. I didn't put much into it when it came down, and I don't put much into it when it goes up. The total budget expenditures for 1314, the net general fund, and that, the reason it says not is simply because it excludes inter-fund transfers, is 71 million. The special education fund, just under 11 million. And the total expenditure is 81,992,534. And that is the funds under the revenue cap. Outside the revenue cap, we have the recreation department at 1.9 million, the food service fund at 2 million, and the donation fund at about 90,000. The expenditure changes from 131213 to 1314, the net general fund going up 2.7 million or 4 percent. The special education fund going up 208,000 or 2 percent. And total increase is 2.959 million, or 3.74 percent. I'll go through each one of those in a second. Recreation department is going up 119,667, or 6.79 percent. Food service fund, 4,400 dollars, 0.22 percent donation fund, zero. And if you look at the consolidated, look at the expenditures going up 3.74 percent, we have two decreases in, in the last two years. So if you look at the last three years, it's still a, a net decrease over the past three years. As far as the breakdown of the expenditures, salaries, 44.47 million. Benefits, 19.6 million. Purchase services, 11.3 million. Non-capital objects, 4.6 million. Capital objects, 800,000. And insurance, 774,000. Other objects, 282,000. And that gives you the budget total of 81,992,534, or an increase of 3.74 percent. The expenditure changes, salaries are going up 869,000, basically 2 percent. Benefits going up 437,000, 2.28 percent. Purchase services going up 2.6 million, or just under 30 percent. Non-capital objects are going down, 908,000, a decrease of 16 and a half percent. Capital object going down 68,000, decrease of 7.73 percent. Insurance going up a little bit, 26,000, 3.48 percent. And other objects going down, 23,000, or 7.68 percent. If you look at, just basically a layout of how the objects are spent, salaries and benefits make up about 78.2 percent of the budget. And that's actually down from what it used to be. It used to be about 84 percent. Purchase services, about 13.9 percent. Non-capital objects are about 5.6 percent. Capital objects, less than 1 percent. And insurance, that and others, about 1.29 percent. If you look at, we look at each of these items individually, the salaries are going up about 869,000, 1.99 percent. I have built in there, just, just built in a 2 percent salary increase under the direction of Dr. Erdl. We, we just put that in budget, nothing. How it's distributed or, or approved is not included. One note on there, if you look at the budget book on there, it shows the administrative increase going up, like, over 9 percent. And that has to do with what Dr. Erdl had talked about just before, about the administrative salaries include a new elementary curriculum, curriculum coordinator position. And the primary offset is a support, support staff reduction. If you take that out of there, the administrative increase is 1.87 percent. If you look at the, this is a line bar showing the salary percentage of the total budget. And you can see that benefits basically were reduced a few years back. And right now, salaries make up 54.24 percent of the total budget. The reason that it's going down a little bit is simply that we, we're spending more on capital projects this year because we had some fund balance carryover from previous years. Under the benefits, going up 437,000, 2.28 percent. And there's a little, just so you can understand it, the WRS employer portion shows it going up 8.98 percent. And that's simply because, it's a catch-up because the 2013 rate went up. And we haven't had that full year of the increase in the budget yet. So I just wanted to, just to, because that is a little bit, if you don't understand what's going on with the retirement rates. But the blended rate in 1213 was 6.275, and 1314 at 6.7. And in 2012, I don't have the 13 rate in there, but it was 5.9. So it's the second half of the increase that we saw in 2013 that's driving that rate, that increased up a little bit. Health insurance, I have a 0 percent rate increase for next year. And we've been doing extremely well with the self-funded insurance. I don't expect that to go into the positive. I actually am somewhat hopeful that we will have a slight decrease in health insurance again, which is very good. The reason you're seeing a slight increase is, in the positions, when they do become vacant in a budget, at this point in time, I put everybody in a family plan, just to be conservative. And that's why you see a slight increase in the health insurance. The benefits, as a percentage of total budget, just under 24 percent. And you can see that line continues to drop. And part of that is, the main reason is, the, the health insurance has really been under control in the past three years. And also that the employees are picking up their bigger share of the retirement system, their portion of it. But those are the two major drivers there. Now, reading the benefit ratio, 2.26 percent, and that has increased partly for the same reason. Benefits have decreased over the past three years. Purchase services, up 2.6 million, or almost 30 percent. And the main reason is, the capital projects are going up 2.1 million. And we had 800,000 left over yet from 1112, that really wasn't budgeted in 1213. And science area remodel, we had to add 1.3 million to the cost of that project, simply because it came in at much more than we originally anticipated. And that is something that's a high priority, and we're going to get it That's all I can say to that, is it just was, when Bruce Johnson was here, we just had it underestimated how much the total cost would be for doing those, those areas. Nutrition is up 348,500, 28.59 percent. That's simply because we have a, a, a first-year budget in here for the virtual online school. And that would be for the tuition costs for the online classes. There's also a revenue offset to that, which we'll, we'll see later on under the revenues. The facility maintenance budget is up 175,000, 18.24 percent. And that's primarily for projects that are safety and ADA requirements. The West Pool, like, definitely need to be, it's a safety issue over there. Jefferson ADA accessibility, we're going to address that. There were some smaller things like Whitman lockers, that you just don't have enough lockers for kids in the school, and secondary gym curtains. Non-capital objects are down 908,000. Non-capital equipment is down 399,000 of that amount. And that's simply because the district wireless network was completed in 1213. Textbooks are down 424,000. And that's because science textbooks were purchased in 1213. Capital objects are down 68,000. And that's, vehicle replacement is out of the budget. Hopefully, for the next couple of years, there won't be any vehicles purchased. We replaced them all. Debt, there is none. Other objects, up just 2,000, 2,500 dollars. Moving on to the revenues, the property taxes again. Moving on to the revenues, the property taxes again, forty-four point four million, up from forty-three point four seven five million. State sources, twenty-two million, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, down from twenty-three, four forty-two last year, or two point three nine percent. Federal sources, which is primarily grants, three point two-two nine million, just up slightly, three point one seven eight last year, up one point five nine percent. And the local sources, ten million, three hundred and one thousand, up like six point three percent, nine million, six hundred and ninety thousand last year. Total revenues, eighty million, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand, compared to last year, seventy-nine million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, up one point three three percent. The local sources does include the charge-back levy of one million, fifty-nine thousand for thirteen fourteen, and we had one million, seventy-nine thousand in there for last year. The property tax, up nine hundred and sixty-three thousand, two point two percent. State sources down five hundred and sixty thousand, two point three nine percent. Federal sources up fifty thousand, one point five nine, and the local sources up six hundred and ten thousand or six point three percent. Total increase, one million dollars, one point three three percent. And if you look just graphically, where the pieces are coming from, the revenue property taxes, just under fifty-five percent. State sources, twenty-eight percent. Federal sources, just under four. And other local sources, twelve point seven four percent. Am I going to explain the property taxes? Again, I did that with the levy. You see, the things with the L with them affect the levy though, under the state sources. State sources down, five hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars. The equalization and special aids, actually up eighty-seven thousand. Chapter two twenty-eight is down, just under three hundred and fifty thousand. The membership, it's going down for, and it's on a one-year lag. The two twenty membership will be down forty-one FTE from eleven twelve to twelve thirteen, which will reduce to two twenty-eight. And then the fifty-dollar per member revenue cap aid is down three hundred thousand, seven hundred. Now, this is going to change, basically, when it has the budget, because that fifty is going to turn into seventy-five, so it's going to actually be about four hundred and fifty thousand in revenue cap aid. So the state sources will go down just a little bit, the way, the way it's in joint finance right now. Federal sources, basically up fifty thousand dollars for grant changes. The local sources, up six hundred and ten thousand dollars. And basically, you have a charge-back levy change that's included in the local sources of nineteen thousand. And then the open enrollment revenue, without adjusting anything for enrollment yet, or projected amount for next year, that's six hundred and thirty thousand. And strictly for the virtual charter school, increase of a hundred kids that we have projected that will enroll and add for charter school. A budget summary, the levy, without the rec department, again, up forty-four point four million, two point two two percent. With the rec department, up one million, sixty-six thousand or two point four one percent. And the total tax levy with prior year charge-backs, up one million, fifty-nine thousand. Or total, I'm sorry, the charge-backs are total of one million, fifty-nine thousand. Total levy, forty-six point three five million. And that's an increase of one million, forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars, two point three one percent. Looking at the funds that are not under the revenue cap, Fund Fifty, which is food services, which is really run by Sedex over our district now. The budget expenditure is about two million dollars, not much of a change for next year, over this year. My expectation is that it'll come down when we adjust the budget in October. If you look at the breakdown there, we still have some cooks and kitchen manager and part-time employees on our payroll. And we paid Sedex over under the purchase services, which is about one point four six million. We have non-capital expenditures of one hundred and forty-seven thousand, and it makes up the two million dollars. On the revenue side, there's no adjustment in there right now, simply because we're going to wait a little bit until October before we see what we're going to be doing with total revenue. There will not be a lunch price increase for next year. We're going to hold it the same as this year. If you look at the breakdown of the revenue, the food sales is one point two million of the total. The federal aid, nine hundred and five thousand. And of that federal aid, about eight hundred thousand is the free and reduced aid that comes. And that's, that eight hundred thousand is, we have to, we have to adhere to a lot of rules to get that eight hundred thousand dollars. Aid aid, twenty-seven thousand, and that makes up your total of two point one million dollars in the food service fund. The recreation department, one point eight eight million this year, up from one point seven million dollars this year, increased six point seven nine percent. If you look at the breakdown there, salaries and benefits predominant for both the full-time and the part-time staff that put on the rec programs. And then some purchase services too, for paying consultants for putting on rec programs. And the primary expenditure increase of the one hundred and nineteen thousand is the fourth resource officer. That was actually added in the previous year's school budget, that was not included in the budget. It was after the budget was passed, and that's seventy-five thousand dollars. The revenue increase in the recreation department, up one hundred and seventy-three thousand. The tax levy, it shows one hundred and three thousand going up thirteen point seven six percent. But right now, I, you know, I can't say what's going to happen for sure. That might end up being zero in October. The program revenue, up seventy thousand, seven point three percent. And if you look at the direct support from the program, it's at fifty-five percent projected for thirteen fourteen. And it was at fifty-six percent in twelve thirteen. And that's the end of the financial budget overview. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Erdl now. He can answer any questions after he is finished. He's going to go over how the budget alignment, the budget aligned to student achievement in our district. And I turn it over to you.
Mr. Mack does a great job going through, talking about the budget. And when you talk about eighty-one, eighty-two million dollars, what do we, what do we really get for it? What are we doing? What's going to be happening this year? As a parent, as a community member, what does it mean to me? And I'm going to try to touch on some of the major components that we're doing. We're still operating from our long-range plan. And it drives changes, it drives initiatives, it drives the goals, it drives what we do. And it drives our district development plan that is put together each year, that we report out in the summer on how well we did. And we put it together and say, here's what we're going to do, and then we report how well we did. But it's still driven from our long-range plan that keeps us moving forward. So what does it support? A double period of literacy instruction at the middle school. That's something that began this current year, and we're trying to make it more formalized, more, more direct for next year. And we're going to continue to grow that, even as we move into fourteen fifteen with, with an eight-period schedule at the middle school. So next year, we're going to continue with two periods of literacy instruction at the middle school. Principal teacher evaluation support, since we are moving to the teacher effectiveness model, we're going to be piloting that. In the district this year, we've purchased TeachScapes, so our principals have access to the training. There's roughly twenty-four hours of training, so we have consistency in our evaluation. For the fourteen fifteen school year, that'll be implemented district-wide for all teachers, all administrators. So that is something we're working to support principals and teachers on that evaluation system, getting ready for the full implementation of that program. The middle school STEM program, we are adding eighth grade. We started last year with the sixth, seventh grade. The eighth grade component will be added this year. We continue to grow our opportunities for summer school, along with the rec department working collaboratively for summer school opportunities. We, each year, over the past five years, we've increased the number of students that have taken advantage of summer school and continue to offer creative programming to encourage more and more people to become involved with our summer school. Continue to work to increase the number of AP course offerings and the number of students. We've, over the past three years, continued to grow the number of students in those courses, the number of courses that we offer. Number of students being successful on the exams, so that's something that we're continuing to work on, continuing to push for. And we're continuing our math and literacy coaching, in particular, at the elementary level. We use consultants that have continued to grow our principals, and we're working with teachers directly, with our consultants, on reading and math coaching at the elementary level. Our science curriculum staff development, this year, we implemented a new science curriculum at the middle school and elementary. We're going to continue after the first year, it's one of those opportunities, we take what you've learned and grow that, and grow the staff development for it. In addition, looking at the implementation of the new science at the high school level, it's going to take a lot of staff development, a lot of patience, a lot of work with our teachers to make sure that becomes everything that we want it to be. But I think our elementary level and middle school level, we've had some great responses to what's going on in science. It's been taxing for a lot of people, but it is a tremendous program. We're going to continue to grow that through staff development. Mr. Mack mentioned the new science rooms at the secondary schools. I would envision setting up a tour for the school board members. When those are complete, it's pretty exciting of what those are going to be like. And our kids are going to be able to operate in twenty-first century science labs and science classrooms at our high schools and middle schools. We're working with our targeted hybrid classes, so partial online classes, we're doing that in summer school as well, and continuing to grow those opportunities. Online classes, we're opening the charter school. We, I know Mr. Mahoney has shared with me a couple of situations. Of one example, is a family that is moving for, they're going to be gone for a year overseas, yet want to continue to engage with our school district. So we're going to offer the online coursework. We have students from around the state that have applied for open enrollment that we are accepting, that will be enrolled in that as well. And again, going back to the point of trying to raise enough revenue through our online classes from open enrollment to make sure we can offer enough for our current resident students that live in the district, that are able to take online courses. Technology updates for staff and students, we had mentioned earlier about the laptops for all teachers. There'll be some staff development that goes with that, because part of the expectation is that we are using technology in the classroom. And a continued increase of purchasing for Chromebooks and other devices that students have access to at all of our schools. Improved school facilities and athletic fields, a number of things that have been done in that regard. And we're going to continue to grow those facilities in our district. The Montessori school expansion, we're growing that. As we had discussed earlier, we continue to have waiting lists for Montessori. There's a lot of interest in that we see the success of the school in this building. Staff development, as we move to eight periods, as the basis, whether it's block in some cases, eight periods for others. But looking at the staff development that's going to take for longer periods, but a lot of conversations, a lot of work. Visits to other schools that are implementing eight-period days effectively. Staff development for grading for learning, we went through the implementation of grading for learning, or the partial implementation this year, and looking to make sure we have consistency at all four secondary schools of grading and the staff development that needs to go with that. Effective use of bring-your-own-technology, we are going to be analyzing data at the end of the school year for number of students that brought their own technology, and making sure that we have equal access for all students to have technology in the schools. Our PLC weekly time, I can't overstate the importance of that time that we have on Wednesdays, it's a critical amount of time. I know, if you look at the PLC surveys, teachers, once they have it, they're looking for more time to be able to collaborate with their peers. We know that it's one proven way that student learning increases, is through teacher collaboration. And the fact that we have that time built in, and making sure it's used effectively, is critical for what we're trying to accomplish. A building leadership team model for professional development. We continue to grow our building leadership team model, and we meet with building leadership teams several times throughout the year for staff development. And they use what's called the pay-it-forward model as they go back to their buildings. The other component, as we start moving forward, is it's my goal that we don't purchase another textbook as we move forward. It's not saying we're going to eliminate all our textbooks that we have, but there's a lot of online opportunities, a lot of online resources. We know that for science, we know that for a lot of other subject areas. So as we start moving forward, it's going to take a lot for us to purchase, purchase a hard textbook. Fair compensation for staff, something we've, we, the old model of paying teachers is gone. We have to put a system in place. My goal is that we have a system by the end of the summer. I think we need to accelerate that process, get something in place for our teachers to be able to see a way to travel through and opportunities, and where they can go, and what it'll look like toward their end of their career. Continued support for courageous conversations, something we're doing with staff development for administrators this month. And it's, anytime we do staff development, it's taking people away from what they're normally doing. And also, the money we're expending for facilitators for those conversations as well. Our Common Core alignment in math and ELA, another issue of professional development and curriculum development time, that goes into the Common Core alignment. Our work, it's not like we're just starting that, it's been going on for a number of years. But we're going to continue that process and develop our alignment with the Common Core. And I mentioned the TeachScap and teacher evaluation, and further development of that TeachScap. TeachScap is an online tool that is going to be used throughout the state of Wisconsin for the teacher evaluation system. We're trying to get a head start on it and get that training in place now, instead of waiting until next summer. And those are just some of the major components of the budget, and where the expenditures are going.
Well, thank you very much. Mrs. Randall, I am going to turn to you first, please, because I had to ask you earlier to postpone your budget-related comments. So now is our time for the budget. I know you have a lot of...
Actually, I'm going to defer to Dr. Erdl, because I think he's going to be covering it in his update of the state budget.
Okay, okay.
Because we had talked about this, so...
Right, I understand. They're, I'm offering the opportunity here because of the budget directly impacting our numbers and Mr. Mack referencing, you know...
I will take advantage of your offer, thank you, briefly.
Okay, okay.
Again, to request advocacy from our community, as, as these budgets come up. One of the provisions is tax credits for families to send their children to private school. So that will also, as the UWM charter, will offer opportunities for people to leave public education and basically get paid for it. So there's no cap on income for that. It's unprecedented. And it does place us in a very bad position financially.
Now, your point being that, see if I have this correct, that money that goes somewhere else can't go to us. And there's, of course, you know, as Mr. Mack showed, the percentage of local funding is, as a portion of the budget, is going in a direction that is not so favorable to our local taxpayers. So your point is well taken.
And then the one other provision of the statewide expansion of voucher schools, similar. Although, you know, there's going to be a cap on that now, but they say that cap is going away. So again, in previous years, you know, the board was very vocal in asking community members to step up and be vigilant about supporting public education with the money that we need. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other board comment or questions? Is there any community comment or questions? Yes, please. I'm going to ask you again, please, to state your name and address.
Sure, John Castle, twenty-one twelve, Crestview Court. In addressing the simple fact that I previously spoke about, the one point two or one point three...
The one point two or one point three million dollars that it's going to be spent for the expansion of Brightlow Field? Is that in this budget anywhere? I would think that a one point two million dollars would warrant a specific mention. I don't know where to find it. I don't recall seeing it anywhere. Could you show me, please? I didn't see, I didn't see Brightlow Field mentioned at all.
I'm going to jump in here. We, as stated at the beginning, we don't... We, as stated at the beginning, we don't use comment for debate with staff. We appreciate what you're saying.
Excuse me, Mr. Meyer, this is not debate. This is a matter of information.
Well, I understand, but, and so you're wanting to see where in the budget...
I want to see where Brightlow Field is included in the presentation today.
It's in the capital budget. We had separate capital presentation.
May I see it again, please?
John, do you have the slide that had the capital? Okay, all right.
You do not show it in the major budget?
Sir, sir, you're out of order. You're out of order.
Okay, we'll change the subject then.
We appreciate your comment, but this, it's not in the slides exactly as you'd like to see it.
It's hidden.
Well, that's a judgment that you're entitled to make, but we're not going to discuss that in particular. It's not, this budget format, the format of this presentation has been consistently the same for a number of years now. As far as how we present the spending, there is no effort to hide anything in here. We've been very open in our discussion of the money that will be spent on Brightlow.
I take offense at that statement. I also find it ironic that you specifically say that UWM's action with their school, charter school, is a stab in the back.
That was another portion of the agenda where we discussed it at that time.
Okay, then I'll take, I'll withdraw that.
Talk about that now because we moved on from that agenda item.
Well, I'm simply aghast that a 1.3 million dollar item is not included specifically in the budget.
In the presentation. Point taken. Thank you very much. Okay. I've been reminded by Dr. Erdl to mention that what we are having right now is, is the public hearing portion, the public hearing related to the annual state budget, so that the board may take action on the proposed budget at the June 24th meeting. Did I state that adequately? All right. Is there any other comment? We've had a comment on the capital expenditure. Any other comment? Seeing no more comment, one more chance for board comment. Thank you very much, Mr. Mack. Another fine presentation. With that, we'll move to the Human Resources Committee report. Mr. Drows, would you please provide your commentary regarding this, this report item?
Sure. At our last Human Resource meeting, we discussed staff recognition and distinguished service awards. I don't know, Anne, you want to, you want to talk about it?
Actually, I would defer to Dr. Erdl. I believe that he has a plan to start in the fall.
In the fall, starting a system to recognize distinguished service award, distinguished service in the district, and there's going to be a process that will be shared with staff and people, staff members can be nominated by parents, students, community members, and then there'll be a vetting process of who would be recognized, but the people would be recognized for distinguished service, and we'll have more information, but it'll be recognized here at a board meeting. So people will come in, some sort of plaque would be given, and the board would have the opportunity to recognize people that have gone above and beyond or have just done a tremendous job with, with our current duties and, or volunteers, there's a, there's a whole range, and we'll have more of that information will get put out and shared on distinguished service. But I think it's really an opportunity for the, the school board to recognize staff up close and personal and have them at the board meetings for recognition.
Well, thank you very much. Is there any community comment on the Human Resource Committee report? Seeing none, we will now move to the other portion of our report's agenda, the School Safety Committee. Mrs. Randall and Mrs. Muofeld will discuss the action plan as it relates to their student visits and survey results on school safety.
Okay, I will begin. When we first started undertaking this study of our culture and our safety in the district, it was right after the shooting at Sandy Hook Elementary. And like many, many districts around the country, it caused us to have a raised awareness of what we have in place and, and do we have enough in place and all the different... So we, at that meeting, had Dr. Larson come in and get us started on that. We also had a brief little message from the people at Sandy Hook, and there is a brief follow-up one that I would like to share tonight just to kind of remind us how we started. And in addition to taking care of ourselves, our district, our community, it is also recognition of the families there that lost their kids, that people remember, people are thinking about it, and people are working to make this a safer place for everybody. And that's the reason for this.
Everyone knows what happened here last December. The cards came from everywhere. And now families of Sandy Hook are ready to answer you.
Our hearts are broken.
Our spirit is not.
We will be remembered not as the town filled with grief and victims.
But as a place where real change began.
Twenty of our children. Six of our educators.
Gone.
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 We know the price of inaction.
We will honor the lives lost.
This is the time.
It's time to turn the conversations into actions.
We need you now.
Will you stand with us for change?
It's time.
Will you promise?
Will you promise?
Will you promise?
Make your voice heard. Go to sandyhookpromise.org now.
Thank you, Dr. Erdl. So one of the first things that we've done is, Mr., Mrs. Muofeld and I have visited every single school in the district, the nine elementary schools and the four secondary schools, and we asked administration at those buildings to provide a group of students, and we've had lunch with them and we've spent time. We had either a guidance counselor or a social worker in attendance at each of those meetings, and we had a set of questions regarding their environment and how safe they feel. A lot of the conversation was about the building itself, but most of it was about respect and values and rules. And so we have quite a bit of information from our primary students that was really amazing. I don't think any of our pupil services people that were at those meetings, not one walked away without saying, "I learned something, I have something to work on." So it was very, very valuable. It was an opportunity for kids to speak directly to the board. Mrs. Muofeld is going to go over just some of the overall topics, and Mr., or excuse me, Dr. Erdl will talk about specific action plans. But we have determined that we have several needs for outside consulting and some other action items, and those will be coming. We have completed surveys, but not all of them from staff on the 10, or on the assessment that Dr. Larson gave us, which was extremely enlightening. And we have responses from parent engagement surveys with comments. That data is not in a format for presentation tonight, but we hope at our next board meeting that Dr. Erdl or we will give a more thorough presentation. So for that, I will turn it over to Mrs. Muofeld just to discuss the very broad overall topics for discussion from our meetings with students.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. The program format that we used was called Students On Board, and as Mrs. Randall already stated, we met with groups of students over their lunch period and usually had one of their trusted adults in the room, which was a guidance counselor or one of the social workers. And the students were very open from the elementary level all the way through to the high school level. It was, it was really a wonderful discussion. And we also asked them after the session, was this something that you would do again or you would ask some of your fellow, you know, students to do at school? And they did appreciate that we listened to them, we took their information, and now the hard part is the, what should we do about this information? And circling back around to communicate with the students and the staff with some action plans. So just to kind of briefly go over overall topics, what we found was there was a wide range understanding of how prepared the school communities were for drills, what the students thought of those drills, and, and what the adults in the building communicated to them about those drills. One of the clear messages we received from the students was they needed to better understand why the drill happened, whether they were fire alarms or lockdown procedures, and that they would have, they would have wanted more information on that, like a debrief time. One specific example that one of our elementary students asked was, "Well, I was in the bathroom at the time of the drill, where was I supposed to go?" And, you know, that's a very real scenario, that a student would be out of the classroom when, when a drill commences. So their conversations were, it was, it was really enlightening also. Then we talked about classroom management, you know, what do students think about their classroom environment? How productive are they? Were students following the rules? Were they honoring all of the building, respect and culture, rules that, or rules or understandings of behaviors in the school? And some told us that, no, actually, that wasn't being honored sometimes by classroom students, other students in their class, or even sometimes by adults. And that, that was something that could be improved upon. We also talked to them about unstructured time, like playground time and in the hallways and in lunchrooms, and boy, oh, boy, did we receive a lot of feedback on that, on those subjects. They told us that when they had a situation, for example, on the playground, they were not always comfortable going up to an adult and saying that they're having a situation because sometimes the adults were talking to each other instead of monitoring what was happening on the playground. Now, understand, these are not all communities of our, you know, of our school district, but there were enough students that shared those concerns with us that we felt this was an area we need to work on and, and develop some plans and training around for professional development within our staff and an awareness. You know, obviously, this undertaking is, is awareness, really being aware of what is happening in our buildings. We, we know what we say should be happening, but what exactly is happening? The second point to share with you is really the education of our cultural competence, and that just sounds like a really big word and term. But our students are truly receiving mixed messages in our district. Students are feeling that they have labels stuck on them by some adults in our building or even labels put on them by other students. Certainly, that is not what we believe, that is not what should be happening in our, in our schools. So the understanding of what, what those are and how we can all better understand why we are all different people and that we are different, but we are the same, and we should, we should expect the same treatment from each other despite that. And that there probably are a lot of miscommunications happening, and, and that is an area that we want to address and train. There was also another real shocking observation for, for us in, especially in our high schools, and they're probably not uncommon to every high school in the United States or elsewhere, but that, and I have talked with other board members and other districts and other just community members, and their feeling is the same, that honestly marijuana specifically is not a big deal for high school students. And their belief is that the extensive use of it is the new normal. And that's kind of a shocking revelation for me and something that, that we will definitely want to address and work on in our, in our schools. And again, I don't think this is uncommon. I think if you, you talked with other, other high school students and other high schools, both public and private, I don't, I don't think this is new to us, but certainly this is not an understanding that we want our students to have. And so that is going to be an area for us to address. Also, the meaningful student involvement in action plans for a safe and positive culture in school. A lot of the students we talked with had wonderful ideas at all levels, at the elementary levels, at the middle school levels, at the high school levels, but they did not have a way to really share that with their building administration in a collective way, like, I guess if you would call it kind of a student advisory group. And they did have very good ideas. And so that is something that we would like to pursue at all of the school communities, really having that consultation basically so that students are involved in the planning, they, they are involved in the action plans that, that come out, and they're invested in their school communities, and that's something that we, we definitely want to encourage. And then finally, an overall observation was the student services counseling model, the professionals that we have in our building. We put in a new program not that long ago, and do we really know if we have enough personnel to be able to address some of the support needs that we are seeing by our student population? The good thing is, all of the professionals that we had with us in the room had an understanding of what they should work on at the building level when they left the room, and that is a good thing. But we also want them, we want to assign the appropriate resources and enough resources so that we could have more information upfront so that people wouldn't be so, you know, they wouldn't be so surprised. And just to note that the student services personnel that we met with and we did a brief follow-up after the students left the room, they were very engaged, they care very much about their students and are very supportive of this process, as well as the, obviously, the administrators and the building leadership that we interacted with while we were in the building. So we will be getting more information to the board specifically at the various levels. We also have very detailed reports that will be coming on the surveys for the staff and the parent communities, and I guess I'll hand it over to Dr. Erdl at this point. Mary Jo, you have one other comment to add?
Thank you. That was perfect. I just do want to, I meant to say this up front, but some of these are a little hard to hear. We don't want to know, but we do know. But I want to stress that this isn't just the kids. We heard all this and intended to report it, but we also got the staff surveys back and much of the same discussion from staff. So, so a little bit of the same from parents, I haven't been able to go through all of those. So this isn't a handful of kids, and we, you know, obviously, we heard many, many more... So this isn't a handful of kids, and we, you know, obviously, we heard many, many more things. But as Mrs. Muefeld said, these are things that were consistent across the district and across age levels. So they are important. And just one other little thing on the meaningful student involvement. Most schools did have peer groups, peer mentors, places for kids to talk among each other. But when it came right down to it, they did not have, as Sharon said, a direct link to an administrator. So like I said, they had ideas, but they didn't know how to do it. Some chose a writing exercise in a classroom to address a rule that they were having an issue with. But good ideas and really smart, aware kids. So we need to link, we need to lengthen our voices more easily. So thanks.
Next steps, I'm going to be putting together a district safety committee that'll be starting, and hopefully, we're able to schedule a meeting within the next two weeks prior to the next school board meeting. But to get the process going, and that'll be an ongoing committee of a number of people from police, school resource officers, and student, obviously, student services, administration. I'd like to find a couple of students that would be able to serve on there. Mr. Muefeld and Mr. Randall are going to be members of that committee. But then I think we'll be able to work through some of the data that we have, some of the information. There's a lot more to school safety than MEATSI, oftentimes, that we have issues of building security as well that need to be addressed, and how people enter the schools, and do we go with the Raptor system? There's a whole lot of issues that we're going to deal with. So we're going to begin that process with the committee, start working through the data, and come up with recommendations for moving forward or implementations of different things that we just want to institute with regards to school safety. So it'll be an ongoing, it's not something, and I think it's important to remember, and it actually relates somewhat to the state budget too, when Sandy Hook happened. You know, you knew there was going to be an initial reaction to it from all different places. And that occurred, and there was arguments about gun control. There were arguments about, actually, the AD fund in Wisconsin, about the use of the AD fund to pay for school, school safety coordinators and school safety issues, but that seems to have died away. My viewpoint is that I want to make sure we get this committee going in place. It's not something that we just do once, but it's an ongoing committee that we continue to look at school safety and all different aspects of school safety, and dedicate some resources to that committee. So we'll be moving forward with it.
Well, I really want to thank you all, that Mrs. Randall and Mrs. Muefeld and all of the people who worked with them. This work takes a lot of time. And, you know, that's pretty special that we've had the benefit of this. I think it highlights the kind of thing a community school board should do. The school board can't really manage anything. We can't really get anything done. But we are the liaison to the community. We're supposed to know how to keep people talking. We are, these two board members are challenging the assumptions, challenging the expectations, questioning the status quo in a very healthy way that hasn't really been judgmental. It's just been an effort to facilitate the community participating in the safety of its school district and its schools. So thank you very much. We really appreciate your work. And we look forward to Dr. Erdl's recommendations and program recommendations for how to carry this work forward. So is there any other board comment? Is there any community comment? Well, thank you very much. And now we'll move to the report on the board culture assessment, which has been another project with, from Mrs. Muefeld. And she'll provide an update on the process related to board culture assessment. Sharon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Meyer. Thank you again for reafferring me to help you and assist you with this effort. Thank you to the board members who have already submitted their board surveys. We still have a few that need to submit their surveys, so if you could please do that within the next week or two here. We'll be collecting that data separately from a community survey that was also sent out and was supposed to wrap up this last Friday. And we'd like to collect all that information for our discussion at our working session for our summer in-service. We did also receive some community comment on the community survey format and questions. We also received comment from board members as they were filling out their surveys. And we've taken some of that input, for example, numbering the questions as we process the information. We're going to be doing that in our summary. And some other maybe structural changes to the survey instrument. We will hold that until the full board gets a chance to see what has been put together and discuss any, you know, further changes to the instrument. So does the board have any other questions on accessing the survey or?
The board is completely accounted for as of today.
Oh, excellent, excellent. So then that concludes my report.
Well, I'll say the board president was not one of the first people to finish the survey. But I think the survey highlights a similar theme to what we're seeing with the with the safety activities. You know, I'm filling out this survey, and it says, well, do you do this? Yes or no? Do you do that? Yes or no? Well, actually, no. Do you do this other thing? Well, actually, no. And how about this next thing? Well, actually, not so often. Gee, they're all good ideas. Well, whose responsibility is that, to organize that? And, oh, actually, it's the board president's responsibility. And once you get it set up, it becomes part of the structure of the culture of the board, and it will carry forward for a number of years if it's adhered to. So it has been a healthy eye-opener for me, and a good exercise in challenging assumptions and challenging the status quo and raising expectations for me. So thank you very much. We look forward to finishing this work. Any community comment or board comment? Seeing none, we'll move to the last item on the open agenda, the state budget. Comment, Dr. Erdl, please?
The state, I don't want to be overly dramatic or real inflammatory, but this is the seventh, as a superintendent, it's the seventh two-year budget that I've been involved with, working with state budgets. And it's the most troubling state budget proposal, and I know it's not the state budget yet, but the proposal from the joint finance committee to the governor, to the legislature, is most troubling to me for a number of reasons. And it's, you know, we had the state budget where we had to reduce, our revenue cap was reduced by $585 per student, and we cut five, six, seven million dollars. To me, that was less troubling than what we're dealing with here. Mr. Mack mentioned the revenue limit increase and how that plays out. That's in there. I don't think that's the biggest issue that's in there. There's also an increase for open enrollment of $150 per student, which ultimately could be less than if state spending went up more than a certain amount. We could actually, under the old proposal, get more money for open enrollment. But it does tie it to revenue cap increases as well. The language on charter, I don't think I need to say anything more about that being included in the budget. Vouchers going statewide. There was a lot of discussions about vouchers in low, so-called low-performing school districts, according to state report cards, and that's where the voucher battle was taking place. My concern is what's in there now is a political compromise that vouchers will go statewide, every school district limited to 1% maximum of the students. That's a cap. 1% of our students, 74 students. Again, not being able to reduce expenditures because it's spread out across all 14 grade levels. That's $500,000, just at that 1% that would go out of our district to pay for vouchers, or a loss of $500,000. The tax credit issue that Mrs. Randall mentioned in there. The AD fund being frozen, which was, I'd never heard anything about the AD fund, the community service fund. If there's one thing left for the school board to deal with on complete local control, it's the AD fund, although there's regulations. But now you don't have a say-so. Sandy Hook happened, school safety became an issue. They were going to be able to include school safety resources and a lot of issues related to school safety and the AD fund. That all of a sudden is not currently important, and the message is that, no, we're going to freeze the AD fund, we're going to make you put it all out there and make sure that it's all justified, and which, that's fine, I'm okay with that. But the fact that it's frozen, we have school safety issues, we need coordination of it. So I'm a little concerned that that is frozen. That's why we have a school board to make those decisions. Just overall, I think there's just a lot of language in this motion and this bill that flies in the face of traditional public schools and even non-traditional public school. And that's really my concern as it moves forward. So I think we need to communicate with the legislators, we need to communicate with Governor Walker, let him know what we think. I started that process already. The devil's in the details. Mr. Mack tries to get clarification. What does it mean? We don't know. The open enrollment, is it going to be cumulative from U D or is it going to back out the 150 one year and do? So it's left up to people to make interpretations, and then the interpretations become the way we do things. And my concern is, what's this going to look like when this actually goes through? What's going to happen two years? What's going to happen? I'm just looking more ten years down the road. What's public education going to be like? And where's this voucher 1%, where's that going to end up? You know, I don't like to use the words, it's attacking public education and all those things. My concern is for public education, and this doesn't support it. There's a lot of non-fiscal items in here. I recall Governor Doyle getting blasted six, eight years ago for having non-fiscal items in the budget. And then the guarantee is that we're not going to have any more non-fiscal items in the budget. And here we are again. All of this is, a big, a large majority of this is non-fiscal. So I'm concerned. I don't want to get into the politics of it. But ultimately, my biggest concern is for public education and for the Wauwautosa School District. And for two years, four years, we're going to be all right. It's, if we start looking long-term, which isn't done very often in this process, I'm concerned what things are going to look like 10 years from now. So that's my update on the state budget.
Thank you, Dr. Erdl. Is there any board comment? Is there any community comment? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to move into executive session. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed an item on the agenda. Thank you, Dr. Erdl. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Yes, please. State your name and your address, please?
Susan Schwartz. I live at 2107 North 122nd Street. And I have a question for everybody that's sitting on the board. I would like to know, with just a raise of hands, how many of you live directly around Brightlow Field?
Well, our addresses are public.
Right.
So I know that I live north of Brightlow Field.
But do you live right around it on 119th Street, on Woodland, Woodland Court, 119th Street?
No.
Or within two blocks?
No.
Well, the majority of the residents that do live around here, and a lot of them have lived here for longer than probably some of you have lived in Wauwautosa. What you're doing to the green space with the update of the field is apostuous. It is not, in my opinion, what the Fishers wanted done when they signed the deed over to the Wauwautosa School District. It specifically states to use as green space. And it's not going to be green space anymore when you do your updates. And I think you should all be ashamed of yourselves for not consulting more with the residents that live directly around this field to find out exactly how much traffic there actually is already. And with this new field, it's going to triple. And there is no place for all those extra people to park. As it is, the one Saturday, I took out of my own time, a good two hours in the morning, to videotape this general area when there were two baseball games going on and about six soccer games going on. There was no place for anybody to park. I almost witnessed three accidents on the corner of Garfield and 122nd because that street is not wide enough to support traffic on both sides for parking. One person was going in, another one was trying to come out, and they almost met, at least three times. Several people letting their children off on the west side of the street and having them cross to the east side of the street. Several people pulling out and jockeying to get the next person's space as they're leaving. And there are other persons coming in for the next game. And turning around in driveways where there could be kids or animals or who knows what there that could get damaged or injured. I don't think you guys took enough time in regards to this update for public safety. And one last comment. I think that the $1.3 million that you're going to spend on the field could have been better spent on security for the schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Round Castle, 2112 Crestview Court, along the same line. Mr. Brightlow on Garfield and 121st reported to me of the hit-and-run accident that he saw on, I believe it's Underwood Court, where a bus drove in, tried to turn around in the court, backed into a parked car, and left. He was caught several blocks away trying to wipe off the paint from the bus. Traffic is a horrendous problem. And your predecessors made a promise to us with the school board of City of Wauwautosa minutes of November 8, 1982, when this site was divided, that 15.3 acres and this business section here where this building is located, that now therefore be it resolved that the site shall be divided. The building and its immediate site shall be retained for a purpose which is compatible with the immediate neighborhood. A key point here, the next sentence, the remaining site shall be retained for the community's recreational use. You are depriving us of our community's recreational use. We have no parks in this area. The closest park is down by, just north of the freeway to the west of Highway 100. The next place to go is the Wisconsin Avenue Park, which is a Milwaukee County park. The next place to go is Curry Park. There's no recreational facilities there. We in Fisher Woods Community have no park area, and you are taking what little bit that we have and was promised to us away from us. And as far as this meeting being the opportunity for the taxpayers to speak up on what you're proposing to do to spend our money, there's no way in listening or reviewing that report that any taxpayer would have any idea that you're talking about spending $1.3 million to butcher this recreational area. And I'm ashamed and embarrassed for you for the- And I'm ashamed and embarrassed for you, for the, I think it's deliberate deception. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. With that, I will entertain a motion to reconvene into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight-five, paragraph one, sub-paragraph E, to discuss administrative contracts and Wauwatosha Educational Support Association contracts. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Vee. Uh, Mrs. Galante, please call the roll.
Mrs. Vee?
Yes.
Mr. Duroz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Muefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rios?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes, uh, we will take a ten-minute recess, after which we will be in executive session.